Good evening. Now, we have an arrived to clear the Selective Meeting for October 13th, 2020 in session. Tonight's meeting is being broadcast live and taped by NCM. We'll begin tonight's meeting in our usual fashion with the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag and a moment of silent reflection.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a few appointments tonight, a couple of hearings, so we'll get right to it. Our first order of business is to meet with Mr. Ryan. Is he with us? Don't see Mr. Ryan. So why don't we jump to Mr. Collins, who is present. Good evening, Mr. Collins. Mr. Hanson, Mr. Shaughnessy.
Good evening.
Good evening, all.
Good evening. How are you doing today?
Very well. So we have your written reports. You want to add to that?
Okay, I'll run by, go through quickly. 115 KB line transmission project is actually wrapping up. We're hoping to get the line energized tomorrow. The testing today with ever source went well. And then we'll put you back on both lines. That would be a big sigh of relief for myself, anyway. For projects, we have another project going on. Some of them have been completed. Condos on Washington Street, complete. Electrically, Skating Club of Boston, complete. The MBTA solar project is, that's been completed online, is working okay. We have an RFP on the street for a solar proposal for the landfill. They have had some site meetings. We should be getting proposals in early November for that. St. Catherine's, Convent property, that work is complete. Power Lane, which is next to our electric substation, that's going on. These six buildings going in there, six units. Department Street, work is going on down at the airport, there's a hangar. 720 University Ave. There's an office building there that's been upgraded, serviced quite a bit, quite a bit larger for the use. One of the new tenants will be analog. Amazon up on Everett Street project, we're all completed there. Chalwell, they've been having some problems as of late with their power, not relating to the light department, more their own equipment than they're working on that. Now we're working with an engineer. And we've been talking to the Norwood Hospital about some of their projects. We'll see how that goes going forward. The billing department, we're getting ready to outsource the billing. Have them mailed by a third-party vendor. It will be a little bit cheaper, hopefully more efficient. Working on replacement projects for the second, the old circuit breaker down at Dean Street. They were installed back in 1969. They're at the end of life. The relays are mechanical relays. They don't use those anymore. So we're working on a cost, probably a project that's gonna be a couple of years out from now before it's completed, at least a year. So we're working on the engineer and that now. Building that operating, we've been very fortunate COVID-wise. Department's been trying to practice practices and we have not had any issues thus far. The electric vehicle program, we had an ongoing one where we give people credit for charging off-peak, but we're also developing a new one to try and encourage people to get electric vehicles. We think will be a good source of revenue and we'll be able to manage to have them off-peak. And then our solar program still will be going forward, but we haven't had a lot of take over on that project. Any questions on the electric before I turn it over to Daryl for broadband?
Mr. Ajaw? Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Jimmy, just a question on the billing. In the past, the board has raised concerns about the town cost of putting in inserts because it's no longer being done, it won't be done in-house, you're gonna farm it out. So have we ironed that out at all?
I'm having trouble making out. Could you repeat that?
Sure. With regards to billing, in the past, the board has raised concerns about the town costs or potential town costs of being able to do inserts to the billing because now it'll be contracted out versus we can control it today. Any news on that aspect of billing?
I took...
One moment, please. Let's see if we have a technical problem.
Could be technical difficulties.
Technical?
Yeah, I'm struggling. I'm sorry, I'm struggling here, Dave. Well?
Kevin, can you hear me?
Yes.
You go. Helen, can you?
Kevin, can you hear me? Kevin?
Yes.
Matt, go ahead.
This is Matt. Lane, can you hear me?
There's an echo in the room, so it's kind of reverberating, making it tough for us to understand. But I think I got the gist of it, Jim, if you can hear me. Mr. Ajaw was asking about the cost to the town for outsourcing the printing and the inserts on the bills. Is that correct, Mr. Ajaw?
Yes.
On the, as the cost, we did a comparison to what that cost currently in the cost of outsourcing. There was a saving, off the top of my head, I forget the exact number, but it's actually a little bit cheaper in the order of $10,000 to $20,000 a year to outsource it. And that includes doing the insert that we do. In other words, the insert was, is an extra charge, but that included that. So it, you know, it seemed to make sense to do from all the...
That answer questions still?
Yeah, that answered that question. And just the good news on the electric vehicle programs. I know you're reporting that 25 customers are enrolled today, which is great. A year ago, I looked back at the report and it said we had nine customers at 83% compliance. Today, we're at 25 customers with 95% compliance. So really good that you're moving in a very positive direction.
Anyone else before we go on to Broadway?
Mr. Maloney? Real quickly, Jim, can you hear me okay?
Hi.
Okay, just a question about the Dean Street Station. So you say we can, we could pay the five million, roughly $5 million out of depreciation, but we might borrow instead. Is that what you're saying? And you'll have a recommendation in, you'll have a recommendation for us soon?
Yeah, I think it's something that we developed the cost. We're pretty good on, I suspect what the recommendation will be, it will probably be the earliest town meeting in May. But I suspect, based on what I know today, I think I'd recommend you borrow half of it and spend depreciation for the other half. So I think it would be like a two and a half, two and a half million dollar split.
Okay.
But right now, in that way, we're able to accumulate some of our depreciation for backup.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, I guess we're ready for Darrell, broadband.
Hey, thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's good to see you all again. It's been a long time. I was gonna save this for last, but I find that it's often better to discuss the bad news first. We sent over a package concerning a rate increase and I was gonna have Ron Ray with us, doesn't look like he made it, to answer any questions that you might have, but I can give you a little background on it, if I may. We're preparing right now for retransmission consent negotiations. And just a reminder, that's the rates that we pay the local broadcasters, such as Channel 7 and Channel 5 out of Boston. These are three-year agreements that we're negotiating right now. We're anticipating very high increases again. Last year, they started at 100% increases and we kind of expect them to do the same thing this time, as well as some pretty moderate increases from the rest of the cable networks that are gonna hit in January. So to offset these increased costs, we're looking to do a rate increase. And it's only gonna be affecting the video services. It's gonna pretty much be a $10 increase for video services. We have some small increases for equipment. Are there any questions from the board or can we move on that?
Is this an additional increase from what we just voted?
I wasn't aware that you had just voted.
Didn't we vote one at the last meeting?
Yeah, we did.
Last meeting, we had requests before us.
Okay, good. I wasn't sure if you had any time.
So that's just a backup on that vote that we took, the reasoning.
Okay. I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have any on it.
He should answer that one.
Okay, you can go on.
Okay, thank you. So I'll go quickly through the, through our update. As Tony knows, and some of you may already know, that we're working with the school department now to assure that all the students in town have internet service. So any that qualify for this assisted service is contacting the school and we're going out and getting them installed and making sure they can do their remote learning. Some good news, we secured two contracts indirectly for Moderna Fiber Circuits. These are gonna be pretty lucrative fiber circuits that are gonna allow them to connect to their other facilities and to the internet. They're building a redundant service. So one circuit's gonna go out to Canton, the other one's going out through Sharon. This is something we've been working on for a long time and we finally got started on it. One of the circuits is done, the second is in progress. We're also working with the police and fire department. They're looking for some new circuits to take place, take the place of some old copper circuits that they have, that keep breaking down on them. And I think Verizon is kind of tired of fixing them and they're tired of calling for them to get repaired. So we're looking at putting in some fiber circuits to replace those. Few of the projects that we have completed recently is the Skating Club of Boston, Children's Hospital, who put some fiber into their analog devices in their new facility. Stewart Hospital, even with all the troubles that they're having over there, they ended up putting in another fiber circuit to get to their server center. 732 Everett Street is just about done and we're also working on the 862 and 878 Washington Sales and marketing has been doing remarkably good through the pandemic. I would have expected the opposite. We've been putting out a lot of new customers, especially in the business area, a lot of new business customers this year. Technically, if you recall, the last time we met, we were looking into some new ways of delivery fiber to the home and some new video platforms, streaming type services. And then all came to an abrupt stop, all of our research, when COVID hit. And we're now opening up discussions again with the vendors to see what products are available and which ones are gonna be the best fit for our system. And with that, any questions?
Anyone? Mr. Ajaw?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Darrell, on the current project list, you talk about the space that you have in downtown Boston that you share with Shrewsbury Electric. And then you follow up by saying we're acquiring your own space, which will move limitations that you currently have now and save thousands. How are you saving the thousands, just so that we're all, we all know?
Part of our deal with the town of Shrewsbury for sharing their space is that we buy our internet connection through them or one of our internet connections. And that kind of ties our hands because there's a lot better deals available in that building. So by having our own cabinet, we're able to go out to market and get much, much better pricing on internet services.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Mr. Shaughnessy, you have anything to add, sir?
I do not. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Anyone else? If not, thank you very much. Appreciate the report.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I could, I'd be remiss if I didn't mention that this Friday is Mr. Collins's birthday.
Oh, happy birthday, Mr. Collins. He disappeared quickly.
I will tell him right now.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Ryan. How are you tonight?
Good morning, all, Mr. Chairman. Members of the board, good evening. Nice to see you.
We have your report. Would you like to add to it?
I have my report in front of you. I'm just gonna highlight some of the things that I think are important. If you go around town, you see some of our roadway pavement markings being refreshed. We have a contract out this year and that's ongoing. Yeah, we have 28 athletic fields. Most of them, if not all, right now, as of today, have been aerated, seeded and fertilized. Through the center, we've installed the autumn banners to celebrate the season. And also started decorating and we're almost complete with decorating different traffic islands. Chip Mickelson from Highway and Parks is our little artist there and it's something that's very welcoming, especially in this period of time. Need a little joy, a little happiness, bring smiles to people's faces. The outdoor area on Central Street, obviously, we continue to maintain. It's a wonderful success and keep it going as long as we can, weather permitting. As you know, seven municipal parking lots, including the senior center, have been improved. And we recently installed 12 new trees, four at the post office parking lot and eight at the Talbot, AKA Gables parking lot. You go down Edekot Street, the Elaviso's Park is immediately to your right when you turn down there. And the Conservation Commission's gonna be installing a pavilion there for people to enjoy some outdoor activities. And we worked along with Matt Walsh from the building department and Ramona Morgan. And we recently put the concrete pad and footings down. Plus, we've been seeded around it. It's very attractive. Once a pavilion goes up, it's gonna be a great asset to the town. As I mentioned, we're working on the athletic fields, just not aerating and fertilizing seating, but cutting, marking out for any activities going on. We've assisted the recreation department on their movie nights and any other activities, such as cow washes, which are ongoing. We hosted the hazardous waste day, the Household Hazardous Waste and Recycling Day on September 26 at Winter Street, which was very well attended. And I'm sure the planning board has updated you on how many people attended and the income provided. The water department, we got a lot of water projects going on. Water main cleaning and lighting on Prospect Street is ongoing between Prospect Ave and Winter Street. You see the bypass, the Loveground bypass out there. We started cutting in some gate valves today and we're looking forward to having that project completed by mid-November. We also have the water main installation project of Summer Street and Union Street. This is a benefit of the inter-community connection with Sharon. As you know, Sharon provided $1.5 million towards upgrading the water system in Union Street, Summer Street area, and that project is ongoing. Dean Street Bridge finally opened last Thursday. Project came in a little bit under schedule, which is great, and right on budget, so that's even better. And I think we're all happy with that project. The quality of work, as well as the benefit of a half million dollars from Mass DOT for that work. Cemetery Department is a busy year for them. You have my activity chart, calendar year, fiscal year in front of you. But along with all the activity of doing interments, you know, they slice seed in the fall, they fertilize in the fall, along with their regular cutting, aerating's going on. Old Paris Cemetery is looking fabulous. Edging all the veteran markers in preparation for Veterans Day. And I don't know, you know, the board knows, but Paul Ranali, for many years, has been doing tree injections where they actually inject fertilizer into the ground around all the trees up there. Very involved work, but very beneficial to the trees. Engineering Department, we submitted a complete streets project application to Mass DOT. This is the number one priority as voted on by the board, and that would be providing new sidewalks, curbing on Short Street from Washington Street to the Naperville River Bridge, and also along Moore Street from Short Street to Washington Street. That project, we believe, will receive high marks because it's an environmental justice area near an MBTA station. Many walkers use that for work and for the schools, Bald School and Hopefield Middle School. Parklets, the planning board received some funding for some parklets, temporary and permanent. And we're gonna be starting very shortly on East Oil, Washington Street. We got all the utilities marked out. Light Department has worked with us. Removing some poles that have been there since 1984, Mr. Chairman. When we widen that road, these are poles that are Verizon poles. Take a drive by, you'll see a couple of poles that have been there since they widened the road or relocated the road. So Mr. Shaughnessy was able to work with Verizon and start having those removed. Aneurysurfacing's going on, a lot of projects going on. With that, coal cleaning was done last week, curbing's going on specifically on Railroad Ave, will be paving very shortly. And the town hall parking lot, so pretty much all done, other than the striping. So with that, Mr. Chairman, open up any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Ryan. You know, I've often said that the DPW is the lifeblood of our municipal operations. With the diversity of subjects that you discovered, it illustrates that very well. I have a question for you, if I might, that's not on your report. We haven't talked about it in a while and I'm wondering if you have any information on it. And if you don't, maybe your assistant will. And that's the MWRA, the redundant water supply that was supposed to be coming to the town of Norwood. Any update on where that stands? Is that still happening?
It is, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, that project is proceeding very quickly. They're pretty much all done with the water main installation. There are two water main taps that are involved. One of them's gonna happen October 22nd, and that will make the connection between the two supplies. So they're very close to completing those projects, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Mr. Maloney?
Just a couple of things. Thank you, Mr. Ryan. One is glad to see the Dean Street project is done, the street is open, and people are free to travel on Dean Street, just the way they used to. Also, the parking lots are looking great, really delighted about that appropriation, and it really pays off in a big way, particularly the Talbot slot, which was a little more complicated than a couple of the others. Came out really, really well. So thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. This is Donahue.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Jett. Good evening, Mr. Ryan. Question, please. The tree that went down on Pleasant Street near the new cemetery that we acquired, did that cause extensive damage?
I'm sorry. Mrs. Donahue, once again, I apologize.
Okay. The tree that went down on Pleasant Street near the new cemetery that we acquired, did that cause extensive damage?
So we did not acquire that cemetery? That's under someone else's control now?
We haven't, we haven't got that yet?
No, they gave it to someone else.
Really?
So we, you know, ironically, the beginning of the week, Mr. Cooper, and he forwarded to me the Gardens Cemetery out of, basically West Roxbury on Baker Street, our, I don't say the owners, but they're now the managers of that cemetery.
So I had thought that we had done that. Excuse me. I have another question, please. When the bridge was rebuilt on Dean Street, is the height of the, like, the water level the same so that there's still enough space in between the water and the top of the bridge that was before?
Yes, nothing changed hydrologically, Mrs. Donahue. The bridge width and height stayed exactly the same, so the water overflow as it was doing prior to the bridge replacement.
So that was quite a huge project, and that was done very, very well. Thank you.
Thank you.
And the last question has to do with Washington Street and Prospect Street. We got word that that's getting closer? That's an old project of yours that you've been working on for a long time? On Washington Street and Fulton Street?
Traffic lights?
The money that we got for the fixing up the area there?
No, not...
So the intersection of Washington, Upland Road, Prospect and Fulton?
Right, right.
The intersection project, Mrs. Donahue?
Right.
Yeah, so that's, that's under the Mass DOT Transportation Improvement Program, TIP, and it's been pushed to fiscal '22 because, you know, we have made some design changes. So that's, that's coming forward. That's gonna happen. That's nearly an $8 million job now.
So how many?
And we just found out today that Camp and Ellie Companies signed a contract with VHB to start designing the signals for Upland Road, which is in their intersection at Planting Field Road, just north of there. So there's a lot, activity's gonna go on the next couple of years there, but it's all good. It's, you know, good for the development where Moderna is and Upland Woods Development. And also, all the residents that use Prospect Street and Washington Street. So starting next year, you could see some construction up at Planting Field Road.
How many years?
And then the following year at Prospect Street, Upland Road, Washington Street and Fulton.
How many years, Mr. Ryan, would you say that you've been working on that? That's an old project.
I don't think I had great here then, but I think it was 2010.
Right. And it's, as you go along, you learn. It took so long for you to get that bridge on Moore Street pushed through, too. So the Dean Street project went much faster. That was much better. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
We have just a minute or two because we have to get to a publication.
Very quickly, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Ryan, thank you very much for the report. Appreciate it. I think in light of the restrictions that you've had to adhere to for COVID and some of the personnel things with one man and one truck, you've gotten a whole lot done. I really appreciate it. I just wanted to specifically mention that the Veterans Memorial Park that's on Chapel Street, near where I live, the work that you did on Berwick Street looks tremendous, and I think that that's really made a great improvement. So kudos to you and your team.
Thank you, Mr. Lane. Long time coming to get that stretched on. It's gonna look fabulous.
Agreed.
Mr. Ajaw?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to reiterate what my colleague, Mr. Maloney, said. Great job with the trees, as well as the parking lots and the Dean Street Bridge. A lot of people are happy that that project is over, including you, I'm sure. On the Summer Street, Union Street, you know, when it was first designed, you weren't sure if you had to replace pipes or whether they could be relined. What did you end up having to do?
So what we found out, Mr. Ajaw, we replaced the water main from, on Summer Street, from Route 1 to Union Street. Because what we found, it, well, it could use relining, it needed to be enlarged because the supply to that neighborhood was not adequate. the supply to that neighborhood was not adequate. And further down between Standish and the Route 95 Bridge on Union Street, that water main, while the size is adequate, it was cheaper to replace it rather than reline it in this case. So to that effect, Sumner Street, new 12-inch main from Route 1 to Union Street. Union Street, new 8-inch line from Standish to just about the Route 95 overpass.
Okay, and the, the five sewer service and one sewer main blockages that you cleared, were those on the town side or private property side?
I'm sorry, Mr. Hajar, once more, once more?
The sewer services that you had the main blockages in, you said sewer main blockage, was that on the town side or was that on the property owner's side?
So if we get a call, many times we get calls that someone's sewer service is backing up, we, we'll go out there and we'll see if the main has an issue. If the main is free flowing, we'll let the residents know that we can come in and clear their service. And we do that, you know, a few times a month. There is a service charge, a nominal one, because there's no company out there that does a better job than our sewer department when they go out there, Mr. Hajar. So typically, it's, you know, the, the property owners own the sewer, sewer service, but we provide the service to go out there and clean it properly, and you probably won't be returning there for many, many years.
Thank you, Mark. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Thank you, Mark. Appreciate the report. Very informative.
Thank you, Mark.
Appreciate your time.
Thanks, Mark.
Thank you for joining us. All right, that brings us to 7:30 show cause hearing regarding 32 Geild Street, Doing Business as Olivati. Mr. Manager, you have a notice of our public hearing?
I do. September 21st, 2020, Anthony DeLappa, Olivati, 32 Geild Street, Norwood, Mass. Dear Mr. DeLappa, the Board of Selectmen in meeting of Tuesday, August 25th, 2020, voted to conduct a show cause hearing under Chapter 138 of the Massachusetts General Laws to consider whether your license to sell all alcoholic beverages should be suspended, limited, revoked, or revoked for failure to provide the public with the services contemplated by the license as required under MGL Chapter 138, Sections 12 and 77. This hearing will be held on Tuesday, October 13th, 2020, at 7:30 p.m. in the Police Community Room at 135 Manhattan Street.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. DeLappa. And Mr. Hearn, Attorney Hearn, are you representing the Olivatis?
I am. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, David Hearn Jr., 470 Washington Street, on behalf of the license holder, 32 Geild Street Inc., Doing Business as Olivati, and Anthony DeLappa, the DeLappa family, who has owned and run that restaurant for better than 12 years, is here this evening. Mr. DeLappa forwarded to me the letter from the board regarding this evening's show cause hearing, and we're certainly happy to answer any questions. But I suspect that most of you know that the present circumstances we're all enduring, and the pandemic is really what has led us to the present situation where the restaurant has closed. So we're happy to take any questions, but I, let me make one statement. The restaurant closed in June after a run of about 12 years, a very successful run, but the circumstances of the coronavirus pandemic basically reduced the income to the point where it made no sense to keep the restaurant open. There was hope that perhaps down the road, there will be use of that building again as a restaurant, but the DeLappa family, for the time being, is looking into their options on that. And what complicates the matter to a great extent for them is that Mr. DeLappa, senior, Anthony DeLappa, the founder of the family operation, passed away unexpectedly back in April. And so they are still dealing with effects of that, and as a family, trying to decide what is best with respect to the restaurant. So we would ask that the board allow the, the owner of the license, the opportunity for six months to investigate what the options are available and see what can be done. We understand the board's concern for anybody sitting on a license too long, but we also know that you've been very willing to allow businesses the opportunity to try to figure out what they can do with the license that they've worked hard to develop and use for the public benefit.
Thank you. Anyone have any particular questions? If there aren't any particular questions, we'll either honor the request or otherwise by motion. If it's to honor the request, it should be to continue the hearing for six months.
Move that we continue the hearing for six months.
Second.
Anything further? Seeing no one else to comment, we'll put it to a vote. Mr. Hajar?
Aye.
Mr. Donahue?
Aye.
Mr. Maloney?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. So that is unanimous. We've granted the additional six months' time.
Mr. Chair?
Thank you very much.
One moment, Mrs. Donahue.
And to the DeLappa family, very sorry about the loss of your father, and we appreciate the beautiful job that you've done fixing up that building in the center of the town and maintaining it in such an elegant manner for our town. And your loss is our loss. Very sorry.
I'd like to thank, I'd like to thank you for that comment, and it has been a tough time, but we know that my father took a lot of pride in that building, and he was there every day making sure everything looked perfect on the building, and he took great pride in seeing everyone from the town of Norwood and the surrounding towns come in and enjoy themselves. And it was a difficult decision we made to close, but we didn't see any avenue besides closing with the restrictions for the type of restaurant that we are. So that's what we had to do, and we are looking into what we're going to do with, with the property. We're still dealing with business issues relating to my father passing, so that's all still kind of up in the air. But we definitely know that, yeah, it's, it's a place that, you know, I spent 12 years working there, building it, and, and we want something good to happen to it. So we're definitely invested in the property, and that's, that's our plan. So we will do some research on what we're gonna, what we want to do, and we can, we'll get back to you as soon as we find out.
Well, we appreciate all that, and we thank you, as Mrs. Donahue mentioned, for past history with the community. Hopefully, it's positive going forward as well, and for the moment, you have the additional six months to see how we can work things out. Thank you very much. Appreciate your time here this evening.
Thank you very much. Have a good evening, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Good evening.
All right, we have a few minutes to next appointment, which is at 7:45. Just think that's enough time to handle the discussion of the local license, or do you want to hold that? That was kind of brought up on your request, Mr. Maloney.
Sure.
Do you want to?
Yes, no, I can, I will. I'll be, I'll be brief. I'm, I'm thinking that under the circumstances, it might be wise for us to follow the lead of certain other communities. Christina Mulvaughn's been kind enough to list 30 of them in a memo to us and reduce the Section 12 and possibly, if people want the Section 15 license fees for the upcoming year. It would be a one-year adjustment to fees, to whatever we think is appropriate, but I'm, I want to get my colleagues' feeling on that matter, and then if you like the idea and concept, perhaps we could, we could vote on a, on a percentage reduction. I think we all have this chart, Section License, Section 12 licensees by category, and Section 12 and 15 by category, and the, the attendant mathematics that go with it, if we decide to move forward with either a 75% reduction or a 50% reduction in fees. So I guess, Mr. Chairman, the first thing is, do people think it's a good idea to do this? And if so, perhaps one of us, maybe I'll do, make a motion to some effect. Thank you.
Any general comments before we discuss a particular motion?
Question, please. Is it all right if I sit in my seat for this discussion?
Going to refuse yourself?
I have a, right, I'm excusing myself.
Fine.
Because I have a license.
Fine. Mr. Lane?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, Mr. Maloney, I think this is a good idea. I think it's an opportunity for us to help out the businesses in a, in a way that makes sense to me, and I know a lot of other towns are doing it, and I know that it's, people would appreciate it, so.
Mr. Hajar?
Yes, and looking at the list, I also think it's a good recommendation that we deal with the licenses. As with the rents that we discounted earlier, this has hit to our budget, but it's something that I think we need to do because of the circumstances to help these same businesses, especially as we head into the winter months, and the outside dining is going to slowly phase out. They're not going to be able to fit in as many people on the inside as, as they do with the outside today, so I mean, I'm in favor of 50% reduction myself.
Could you just clarify, you're speaking for Section 12 and 15 businesses or just 15?
No, I was, I was doing Section 12 myself, Mr. Chairman.
Section 12. Is that the package stores?
No.
It's the opposite. It's the opposite.
It's the opposite. Section 15 is package stores.
Got it. Thank you.
We have, we have 12 of those in total.
And, Mr. Hajar, I just hear you recommend 50%?
Yes.
Is that a motion?
Sure. I move that. We discount the annual...
Sorry, I'm sorry to interrupt. Could we pause for just a minute?
Blackman William J. Plasko, Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Mazuko. Mr. Hearn, welcome again. I understand you will be representing AM Ventures Boston DBA Aston, Aston Martin, is that correct?
I am, Mr. Maloney. Thank you very much. And Michael Igeros, who is the principal of AM Boston Ventures, is available also. He's muted at the moment, he's not speaking at this point, but he's available to answer any questions. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, what we're looking for here is the last one license for a new brand of automobile. Mr. Igeros currently owns and operates the Norwood Cadillac dealership at 700 Boston Providence, Mike, and is proposing to add the Aston Martin brand. And the, he has the franchise, he purchased the dealership, and proposes to put it at 700. That is a site that has been used as an automobile dealership for years and has been improved over the years, including ability to build about... Seven or eight years ago. And we went through all the planning process there with the planning board and zoning board at that time. So the site is permitted for the sale of automobiles. We don't need any special permit or anything like that, but this is a new dealership with a new entity that will be responsible for the Aston Martin side of it. And I think, and Mr. Igeros will correct me, I think there's another brand, is it Lotus, I think, may be involved also. So we filed the application, and we also met with the building inspector, Mr. Walsh, last week on site, and he signed off confirming that no, that a building permit is necessary. He agreed that from zoning point of view, we're all set, that the site is permitted, but building permits will be required for improvements to be made to the property. But what we're asking for is the, for the license, the class one license, the hours of operation that are proposed at 8 a.m. to 8 p.m. Monday through Friday, and Saturday at 9 a.m. to 5 p.m. And that is it. And if I've left anything else, anything out, Mr. Igeros, I'm sure will chime in on that. Happy to answer any questions, Mr. Chairman.
Do we have any questions from the board, Mr. Hajar?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just out of curiosity, when you say improvements to the site, what are you talking about?
I'm sorry, we're having trouble hearing you. We can try that again.
He's, he's asking, what improvements are you referring to when you talk about improvements to the site? Perhaps the question is better directed to Michael Igeros.
There's no, he can answer that, about what improvements are proposed.
Mr. Igeros?
There's no current improvements proposed at this time.
Thank you. Mrs. Donahue?
Thank you. It says the hours of operation on Monday and through Friday and Saturday. Would you, are some dealerships operating on Sundays? Would you care to add Sundays to that or no?
Yes, we would like to. We currently are not operating on Sundays, but there's a possibility that we will be in the future. So possibly 10 a.m. to 6 p.m. would be great on Sundays.
Attorney Hearn, is there a regulation about Sunday mornings in regard to automobiles or no?
Mrs. Donahue, I'm not, thank you for the question. I'm not sure of that at this point, what the limitation is on Sunday, how early this type of operation could open. We didn't request it in the application, but it's type of, because we're not presently operating on Sundays. If we did in the future, as Mr. Igeros referred to it, we would certainly follow whatever the local requirements are on that, and we would ask the board for an amendment on the license as necessary.
That sounds fine.
Right now, we're not operating on Sundays.
Thank you. That sounds fine.
Thank you, Mrs. Donahue. Mr. Lane, anything? Anybody else? All right.
Just to, just to clarify, Mr. Maloney, is that even though he's talking about a 10 to 6, that's the future? We're not doing it on the application tonight?
Correct.
So if they want to modify it, they'll come back?
For Sunday.
For Sunday.
Yep.
Okay.
I'm having a hard, difficult time hearing, but if there's a possibility of adding the 10 to 6 in this application and this approval, we'd, we'd appreciate that.
Doesn't advertise that.
Okay, all right. Well, perhaps we'll hear more about that in the future.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. If there are no more questions from the board, I'll see if there's anyone from the public who might want to have a question.
Nothing on our end.
Nothing on our end.
All right. If there's nothing from the public, then we'll entertain a motion to close the hearing.
Second.
Motion made by Mrs. Donahue, seconded by Mr. Hajar. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Mr. Hajar, on closing the hearing?
Aye.
Mrs. Donahue?
Aye.
Mr. Lane?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Pleasure, the board?
Vote to approve as submitted, excluding the Sundays.
Second.
Okay, motion, motion to approve as submitted. Very good. Anything further? Hearing none, put it to a vote. Mr. Hajar?
Aye.
Mrs. Donahue?
Yes, aye.
Mr. Lane?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. The vote is four to nothing. The motion passes. License is granted.
Thank you very much. Good evening.
Thank you very much.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Igeros. Thank you, Mr. Hearn.
Thank you.
All right, very good. Thank you. We'll set, all right. Next item on the agenda, we have an 8 o'clock, we have an 8 o'clock hearing. We're a little early for that. Oh, that means I have to turn over the microphone back to Mr. Plasko. All right, well, go ahead.
Thank you. Great job. All right, so we handled the local license reductions, fee reductions. Number two on new businesses, Lee Kennedy, the Circle of Hope, asking to use the Town Common for the annual women every night on Saturday, December 5th, 2020.
Motion to approve.
Seconded. Anything further? All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Hajar?
Aye.
Mrs. Donahue?
Aye.
Mr. Lane?
Aye.
Mr. Maloney?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. That's unanimous. Okay, we also have a request for the Town Common gazebo for a series of free socially distance fitness classes for a maximum of 15 people to be held. Did we already have this? This is a new one?
Yes.
Held Saturdays from 12:30 p.m. to 2:30 p.m. on October 17th, 24th, 31, and November 7th, 2020. Mr. Hajar?
So my, thank you, Mr. Chairman. My only concern that I asked for clarification earlier was I want to make sure that we're not conducting any type of business operation, because we had two in October, which was great, and now we're doing four in a row, which is also great. It says for free, so that's awesome. But I just want, you know, for the public, it is, it is free, so it isn't a business that we're conducting. And I just want to make sure that the applicant knows you're not even supposed to be trading any type of services or anything that would be construed as business operation, because then we're going to have an issue.
Right. I'm afraid I missed the backup on this. Was this the same, the same people making the...
Yeah, same people.
Yeah, I know I had hesitation last time, too, because we had already voted for these type of activities to open up our different playgrounds and fields and open areas, so why it would be, have to be down at the Town Common. Any motion to approve or deny?
I'll move to approve. I'll move to... I'll move to approve as submitted.
Seconded. Seconded. Mr. Ja?
Aye.
Mrs. Donahue?
Aye.
Mr. Lane?
Aye.
Mr. Maloney?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. The request is approved. Edmund Melvahill, Director of Veteran Services, submitting to the board a request that we conduct a virtual Veterans Day in November, as we had to last year with the COVID and different issues that occurred. And this year, the COVID certainly is a factor.
Motion to approve.
Second. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Mr. Ja?
Aye.
Mrs. Donahue?
Aye.
Mr. Lane?
Aye.
Mr. Maloney?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. So that's unanimous. And what time is it? Are we here?
We've got a couple of minutes.
Couple of minutes still. Thank you. Election warrant for signatures of the board, approval of the board?
Motion to sign.
Second.
Second. Mr. Ja?
Aye.
Mrs. Donahue?
Aye.
Mr. Lane?
Aye.
Mr. Maloney?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. So that's approved unanimously. Zoning Board of Appeals, Associate Members, we have, what is it, five? Three openings, I believe, and is it four or five applicants?
Four.
Four applicants. Five applicants.
You do?
Sometime in the past, there was some discussion that we probably should interview applicants for some of these positions, especially when they're newer, unknown to us individuals. Would the board like to take any action or set up appointments?
Mr. Chair, I move that we invite them in for an interview.
That make sense?
Yeah. I think it's a good idea. I'll second that.
As discussed in the past, so I think that's a proper procedure.
Question for you, Mr. Chairman, or for Mrs. Donahue? Do we want to make it at our next meeting, or do we want to make a special meeting in between to do this? Just something online?
Whatever's convenient for the board.
Yeah.
Make it separate, Christine?
I think, I agree. I think, Mr. Chairman, I think putting people in a position where they might be on screen or on TV might be a little bit...
Well, it's still a public meeting. If they choose to cover it, they'll still be on.
That's not the...
Yeah.
But it'll be less viewed.
Right.
All right. So we'll work on setting up an interview process with these applicants, so we can look forward to getting these appointments filled. And I'll just make that in the form of a motion. Mr. Ja?
Aye.
Mrs. Donahue?
Aye.
Mr. Lane?
Aye.
Mr. Maloney?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Next item is from Mr. Mazuko, the General Manager, regarding the board, having the board declare broadband UPS a surplus property. You want to explain that, sir?
Sure. Consistent, it's just a universal power supply consistent with our disposal property once, sorry, policy, once something becomes unusable by a department, but we feel it has some possible sale or rebid, we go to the board to declare it surplus, which is the statutory procurement process to allow us to go ahead and dispose of it when it has some value.
Do you know the size of this? Do you know the size of this one?
I don't have my full agenda with me. It should be in the attachment memo.
Any motion? Motion to declare surplus?
Second.
All in favor? Mr. Ja?
Aye.
Mrs. Donahue?
Aye.
Mr. Lane?
Aye.
Mr. Maloney?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. So that's unanimously approved. Number eight, Attorney David Hearn submitting an application behalf of his clients at the Knowledge Space Center for a general on-premises AAB license for the Magic Room at 83 Moore Street, Unit 5A, Karen Norwood. So that would require a public hearing be established.
Move to set public hearing.
Second.
Second.
Mr. Ja?
Aye.
Mrs. Donahue?
Aye.
Mr. Lane?
Aye.
Mr. Maloney?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. So we'll set up that hearing as soon as it's convenient. Mrs. Melvahill? All right. We still have one more minute, it looks like. The Ponce River doing business is the Four Points Hotel, looking to change their managers from Raymond Fiscanto to Kevin Casey. Kevin Casey, he's been there in the past. He's been there many years. Those of us who know the complex and have dealt with him down there know him well. So he's not anyone new or untested. He's very seasoned.
My question was, is that on the application, it shows how many hours per week do you intend to be on the licensed premises? It's 12 to 18 hours. I mean, other bars that have come before us that have been in trouble for not having someone there were excused because the person wasn't there, so they couldn't identify the issue, or can't be blamed because they weren't there for the issue. So we have possibly 32 more hours. I'm sure it's longer than a 40-hour week, but just say 32 hours where the person in charge is not going to be there. So I'm just kind of wondering if we can get a little bit better understanding of how it's going to be run by Mr. Casey, so that someone is going to be there when he's not there that's going to be responsible for that license.
I think a lot of the licenses, the manager, the owner, often is the manager of record on the license is not necessarily present many of those hours. They use their assistant managers and other staff, and they're just general oversight. Mr. Casey has other responsibilities within the complex, so I'm sure that's the time he'll be specifically in the restaurant, but he'll be managing the functions and the whole area of the hotel. And so he's basically on-premise and responsible for the, for the activities.
I actually would like to receive a better clarification from the Four Point Sheridan or Mr. Casey about how the hours, when he's not there, are going to be dealt with, so that we just have it for the record. I don't feel comfortable, based on what we've dealt with in the past, of just saying this individual, and I'm sure, Mr. Chairman, you may be absolutely correct, but we don't have that in writing. And I would just say if we could get just a follow-up clarification of a better understanding of the overseer of the licensed premises, when the person who's identified is in charge is not there for greater than 50% of the time.
So it sounds like one of two motions is in order, either approve the request or to table and ask for the additional explanation that Mr. Hajar has raised. Mrs. Donahue?
Thank you. Out of respect to Mr. Hajar, even though we've done the standard procedure, out of respect to Mr. Hajar, if it makes him more comfortable, I think it's okay to table it for a week and get the information for him.
Okay.
So that's a motion.
That's a motion. So seconded. Mr. Ja?
Aye.
Mrs. Donahue?
Aye.
Mr. Lane?
Aye.
Mr. Maloney?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. So we'll work on getting that information from Mr. Casey and the Four Points management. So I think that leads us to our next hearing, which is Jeffrey Moro, 16 Rosemary Street LLC. Do we have a hearing notice on that?
We do.
Mr. Mazuko, please.
Town in Norwood, application to amend lodging house license. Notice is hereby given that the Board of Selectmen of the Town in Norwood will conduct a public hearing virtually via go-to meeting on Tuesday, October 13th, 2020, at 8:00 p.m. on application of Jeffrey P. Moro for a lodging house license amendment to operate 16 Rosemary Street LLC, 16 Rosemary Street, Norwood. The meeting can be accessed via go-to meeting for the Selectmen of Town in Norwood.
Thank you. Just for history, Mr. Moro did contact our office, spoke with Mrs. Melvahill and myself about his plans. He's not really changing any of the footprint of his premises or the number of rooms that are rented at his establishment. He's in fact improving the site by adding two private bathrooms. We checked with Town Council on the procedure, and it wasn't really clear in the law whether hearings were needed or not. So we all chose to err on the side of caution to get it done properly and bring it before the licensing authority to know exactly what's happening down at that site and have everything on record. Is that satisfactory, Mr. Moro? Do you have more you'd like to add, sir?
Yes, I have a very hard time hearing you, sir, but I believe that from what I heard, everything sounds correct.
Perfect. Any questions of Mr. Moro or anyone else on this matter? Any action?
Move that we approve.
I guess, I guess it's a hearing, so we should close the hearing. Is there anyone else wish to be heard on this matter? Seeing none?
I just had a question as far as, my intention with the property is I have a 16 SRO license as what I purchased in 2014, and that's what I would like it operated at. I may decrease to add more bathrooms. The issue really is with Corona, there's less and less, you know, people that want to share bathrooms. So I'm trying to just make it easier, make it, you know, obviously improve the property. And, you know, my intention is after these two are in, to increase everywhere I can without increasing the footprint or without increasing the number of SROs. My intent is to keep the license the same and not amend it in any way, just add some private bathrooms.
Okay. We understand that. We appreciate your improvement of the property. But for the record, the process we're following, because there isn't clear or guidance, is that you'll bring these before us. This is separate tonight, just these two. When you finalize your plans and are prepared to go forward, then we'll do this again. All right?
Okay, sir. Am I, is the inspector Matt Walsh going to be notified of this? Or can I proceed, proceed right away?
Yeah. He'll be notified by our office, and then you can speak to him about getting the building permit you know, need. I know he was concerned about the licensing process. So we'll make sure he's notified, yes.
Okay, sir. Thank you.
Mrs. Melvahill will do that in the morning.
Okay.
You move to close the hearing?
Close the hearing. All in favor? Mr. Hajar?
Aye.
Mrs. Donahue?
Aye.
Mr. Lane?
Aye.
Mr. Maloney?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Is there any action?
Move to approve.
Move to approve the request. Seconded. Mr. Ja?
Aye.
Mrs. Donahue?
Aye.
Mr. Lane?
Aye.
Mr. Maloney?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. This is approved. We'll notify Mr. Walsh. Good luck on your project, and remember when you take the project further next year or whenever to come back accordingly, okay?
Thank you very much. Have a good night.
Thank you. Appreciate it. All right. Where do we leave off? Town meeting warrant. We have two town meeting warrants. We have a list of items that are on them. I think you have copies of the warrants that have been drawn up. The articles were put together by a sundry of people, the manager's office and his staff, Mrs. Melvahill, the planning department. And we think we have it appropriate at this time. The only thing we need to do is have the board review what those are, make sure you're certain of what they are, and that you approve of them being on the warrant. We could talk tonight, if you want, about the issues, but I thought we had time before town meeting to actually determine our, our position, but that's up to the board. Any questions on what is included on these warrants? Mr. Mazuko?
Just, I do have information on the budget updates. You can let me know if you'd like me to take care of that after the board's discussion or at a different time.
I'm sorry?
Information on the budget updates that we're making at town meeting.
Having to do with Article 1 on the special town meeting?
Correct.
For budgets? Okay. Why don't you mention that now?
Do you want me to start? I have a couple of slides.
All right, cool. Right ahead.
Isn't it a difference? I mean, shouldn't we just act on this first?
Let's just hear this report on the, just on the budget item, while people are looking at it and thinking about it. I see Mr. Ja looking at it all the carefully. Do anyone know why we have this technical problem? Why they can't hear us? Is this, are these mics cable?
It could just be the way the go-to meeting's set up. I have a theater up here that is all the way out, so I'm not exactly sure. I'm ready with your vice chair.
Go ahead.
So as the board knows, we anticipate potentially having to make some budget adjustments as a result of COVID. This was originally what was put forward. We would pause our additional hybrid catch-up, pause contribution to stabilization fund and the override stabilization fund, and possibly utilize free cash in addition to deferring borrowing capital items, which we're doing, in addition to deferring non-override work, and a higher rate slowdown was all part of the package that was presented at town meeting. What's changed since then is that the sky has not fallen to something predicted. The state early on was predicting that the world was going to end, and they were going to have a $4 billion to $6 billion budget deficit. Their numbers have come in around $1.5 billion, which is really about 3% of the state's budget. Local receipts are down a bit, really only the hotels and meals tax, which together only make up about 2.5% of the budget in total. Excise taxes remain consistent, actually closing out FY '20 above FY '19, and building permits continue to break records, and profit tax collection remains stable. So state aid is down from the governor's original budget, however, that number, the original way, FY '20, was still over $1 million increase in state aid. As a result, we have updated proposal for town meeting to maintain services. We're projecting a free cash amount around $8.5 million. Now, that's higher than normal, but two things to note about that is, if you remember, that's actually two years of free cash.
Right.
It's also consistent with what similar-sized towns typically generate, so it sounds like a big number. It's also, as I said, two years of free cash. So the proposal is in order to complicate up here, but to offset the base budget to balance to cover that loss of state aid would be about $700,000. That, that top and bottom, I mean, the decrease in local aid, decrease in local charges. We know that the schools requested additional funding for their hybrid model that comes with a core cost, as well as making sure we're covering the benefits cost. The total of those items is $1.4 billion. Then we do know that we have to make a correction of the cemetery perpetual care fund. We know that there's a capital level request for free cash, a fire parking, and to finish the civic elevator project. Not included in this list is the compensation study, the reason being it's not part of the operating budget or part of a typical capital process, so we'll hold articles like that separately. The total that will be required for this is around $1.98 million. As I said, even if included the other items that we looked at, total free cash would be in the low $2 million range, about $8.5 million free cash appropriation. And we have actually, the benefits of going through, we continue our override deposit as scheduled. We continue our regular stabilization deposit, and once we enter the spring, we see what local budget looks like in state aid, we may be able to transfer additional funds in regular stabilization account. That would sort of be our number one priority going into the spring. We may be able to continue that pension catch-up, and we'd also be able to maintain our level of service levels to the public. And in brief, I'll put that to you, to you, chair. So in brief, we also updated our five-year projection, which I believe the board has consistently override looking at five years. We actually believe we'll have more than enough funding in the next few years to maintain the override. We've actually projected that we need to use an equal amount of free cash next year, as well as funding that hybrid model for a second year, which I hope is not required. There'll be more than enough free cash to continue the budget balance through the end of the override period with free funding of the stabilization, not including any additional free cash we will generate. With that, I'll open up any questions.
Very good. So on this list you have of items of the articles for the warrants, Mr. Mazuko is basically just talking about the matters that will come up under what's listed at the bottom of the sheet as town meeting number two. And it's actually going to be the town meeting we take up first, but that's a procedure with the moderator to go handle. But the money article or the budget-related article is that, excuse me, warrant is that town meeting with the three articles on it. There actually was a fourth article submitted by the finance commission, but I spoke to the chairman and spoke with Mr. Mazuko, and we changed the wording of Article One to make sure that it's broad enough, so they, well, putting it on, as I understood, as a placeholder. They weren't even decided they necessarily going to make any motions or not. I think they're discussing that Wednesday night, tomorrow night. But what we did is, instead of having a whole separate article that's just kind of redundant to what Article One is, so we made sure Article One is broad enough that they, if they choose to go forward, they can make their motion under that article, and they're the group that makes the recommendations in the motion anyhow. So we're certainly not excluding them. We're just not having repetitive, if you will, motions or articles on the warrant. So if there's no further questions on either of these warrants as far as what's being included, Mr. Haja, you have a question?
Yeah, just a question. Tony, on Article 22, the establishment of the Tobacco Control Revolving Fund, the anticipated operational ins and outs that require us to actually have the, I know why you're establishing the fund like some others, but...
Yeah, just briefly explaining, now, for example, who was aware, the state has changed the fines for tobacco violations, so that is something to a minor. It's now a $1,000, $3,000, and $5,000. So those fines and fines are substantial. In discussions with the health department, we want to establish a revolving fund, so that if these fines, they go into a revolving fund, and they only get used for initial enforcement or education. You know, a lot of people think that we're bouncing much off tobacco lines. It also wouldn't be a stable revenue source. They'll go up and they'll go down. So the idea is the state is appropriate a fine that's obscene compared to any other fines we issue. Any of that money would go into just further education, usually contract out for cheap enforcement if they would have that fund for tobacco education. You know, it could be $0.00 in a given year. I would anticipate we normally get a couple thousand dollars a year, so in that first year, you might see $7,000 or $10,000. And hopefully, after that, there's only a few of these a year, if any, but that would money go just towards further education and enforcement, so we're not trying to balance a budget off. What's a pretty substantial fee to a business owner, but again, not one that would be set for children's business, the state which is set.
And the compensation and classification study, my pet peeve for many, many years with the personnel boards. I'm glad we're doing it. It's covering both sides of the House, right?
Correct. The administrative positions on the school side as well. So the classification compensation studies, I wouldn't call it update to our 2002 study. It's been 18 years since we've actually looked comprehensively at overgaming different positions within town government. What it's like to be Sir Jax Redd and some of the board members are. We have some inequities and inefficiencies in our pay structure. The best practice is that if you have a classification compensation study, you actually update it every five years, so you're not increasing positions sort of on the way. It doesn't mean that people get raises, and salaries automatically go up. It's looking at the complexity of the job, the market rate for the job, making sure we're adjusting that accordingly. What we usually see when we do it every five years is certain positions will be brought up to whatever that market rate is that we determine, but then other positions will have a slower growth period because they're already decided determining the at-market rate or above-market, and the role are much lower rate. Personnel board does have a letter, I can get to the board, that they're recommending this as well, requesting it. It's been so long that there are now being so many different requests from staff for reclassification, and some positions haven't been looked at in 20 years, and when you have one person in that position, it tends not to change, and the market has just gotten out of the way for some positions, both above and below.
The other major occurrence is people's position descriptions, they're never 100%, they're never intended to be 100%, but over a period of time, certain things drop off and other things come in. That doesn't necessarily mean that someone's job changed, so you got to give them more money. I mean, that's the natural course of position, is that some things drop off because of technology or that's no longer a priority. Other things get added in, so you have to look at overall, not just, well, they've added five more activities, so he or she gets a $2,000 jump in their pay scale. That's not the way it works, and I think having this will help us and help the personnel board fully understand, because there is tremendous inequities over the number of classes, reclasses that have been submitted, a lot of them granted, which throws off everybody else who's in the same pay scale as where that person came from. So, yeah, I agree.
Mr. Maloney?
Couple things. Mr. Mazuko, thank you. The reimbursed cemetery perpetual care fund, that's a technical matter, isn't it?
It is. We're taking money from one bank account, putting it into another. We found the immediate conversion that for about six or seven years, money that is supposed to improve into the perpetual care fund was just accrued to the general fund. So the town lost no money. It's just, once money goes into perpetual care, we can take it out, so we're just making sure that we're correcting that for the last five years. It's accounting housekeeping. I will say that we're spending that money, but that's money we generated in the last five years that went to the actual general fund, so it's just moving backward.
I see the civic elevator additional funds, 225. What was your, do you know what the appropriation was?
I believe 267, I believe. The 247, 267 is the original appropriation, and based on the cost of the town hall elevator, that's what we're anticipating the civic elevator is going to cost. I can send the board some pictures of that elevator room. Again, it was...
It's quite a bit more, but it's public, been public work now. It's gotten real expensive. Anything to do with the construction side, Matt, you know. It's just, right now, it's super expensive. Okay. I'm all set. Thank you.
Thank you. So, no other questions? I think motions in order to approve the two warrants and to fix our signatures?
So moved, so?
Seconded, and seconded, Mr. Haja?
Aye.
Mrs. Donahue?
Aye.
Mr. Lane?
Aye.
Mr. Maloney?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Mr. Mazuko?
Yes, sir.
Your staff working on coordinating a yellow sheet?
We are three quarters of the way done with the yellow sheet. I keep saying we want to get it earlier and earlier every year.
If we get that as soon as possible, so that the board members can read it, review it. If they have any comments, they can get them back, so you can keep them in the consideration, but will, as a board form, we vote to approve that or not at our 27th, meeting of the 27th?
You will have it by the close of business tomorrow.
Thank you. Okay. Cigali Reese, Director of Board of Health, submitting a correspondence regarding the recent hazardous waste recycling day. Big success once again. Any other comments? Motion to file.
Second.
Mr. Haja?
Aye.
Mrs. Donahue?
Aye.
Mr. Lane?
Aye.
Mr. Maloney?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. That's unanimous. Matthew Walsh, Building Commissioner, submitting the monthly report of activities in the department?
Information file.
Second. Mr. Haja?
Aye.
Mrs. Donahue?
Aye.
Mr. Lane?
Aye.
Mr. Maloney?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. That's unanimous. Mr. Mazuko, anything additional, sir?
Yeah, yes, a couple of things I'd like to mention to the board. One item for the board's consideration down the road, and certainly there doesn't need to be a decision or a discussion this evening, but we are doing capital in the fall because our process with COVID has just led that to happen, but the staff would like the board to consider in the future actually doing capital every fall. It would take some pressure off the annual warrant process, and it would help us balance the spring and the fall. Doesn't mean we couldn't do a capital item in the spring if we needed to, but it'll give us, I think, better time. We'll know what our free cash is. It also will align us better for project management, particularly on the DPW side, especially if we're going to go forward with the capital plan with more road and water work. We're getting an appropriation in May and then rushing to get the construction season underway. If we, in the future, do capital in October, November, we can work on bidding throughout the winter, hit the construction season right at the beginning, and conclude at the end of the construction season. This year, like last year, we will be pulling water pipes and bypasses off the road, hopefully before the snow falls, but it would be able, allow us to take the full advantage of the construction season. I spoke with Paul Ricardi, the school facilities director, and he thinks it's a good idea as well. The schools are in the same boat. When you look at work in a school building that can only be done in the summer, getting an appropriation in the middle of May, you can try to get your bidding done and ready and have bids open at town meeting, and then get the approval and then go, but even then, you've got a very narrow window where you have to start the project right then. If we get the approval in the fall, we know we have the approval. You can go out to bid with the bid start date of whenever that last day of school is. Town buildings, we can generally do work a little bit easier, but we feel it would be a good move to make permanently. So just a suggestion for the board's future consideration.
Mr. Maloney?
Capital Lake Committee met a couple of weeks ago. We do, we do like the idea. Mr. Lane was there as well. We agreed that it would be more efficient for the town if we followed that recommendation.
Yeah, I agree. It's a much better timeline for preparing work, preparing, as you say, bids, and getting ready to go out to construction to take full advantage of the entire construction period, which most of the capital items are, at least the larger ones where we're spending money. Also gives plenty of time for the treasurer to prepare for borrowing, if that's involved and what have you. Makes a lot more sense to me. All right, so...
I did have two other items, Mr. Chairman, sorry.
Go right ahead, sir.
One of them is, we've been asked about Halloween and what the process or protocol will be for Halloween, and the health department has worked on what we can do for Halloween, so there's no banning or non-banning of trick-or-treating. Trick-or-treating is allowed, consistent with where our numbers are. We're asking people, please, no Halloween parties. Don't go to any haunted houses. If you do want to have trick-or-treaters, we ask that you be safe and wear a mask, and of course, we mean a, an actual mask and not just a Halloween mask. And same thing with those of you going trick-or-treating. In addition to your Halloween mask, please wear a COVID mask. Try to keep transactions or interactions limited. What a lot of people are doing and what they're suggesting is you can sort of put a tray out with individual little baggies of candy for kids to come and take. If you do happen to want to open a door, please be wearing a mask. The kids should be wearing a mask. Quick drop in the bag, and that's it. So Halloween can be done safely. We ask that also you try to limit it to your household. Don't go too far from your neighborhood. We know sometimes families like to gather a whole bunch of kids together to go to trick-or-treating at once. If you do want to do it, by all means, you can do it safely, but just limit it to your household. And if you're not interested in participating, there's that unspoken rule in America that when you don't want to participate on Halloween, you just sort of close your, you know, don't turn on your porch light and have the door shut, and people will generally know not to come there for Halloween. So that is Halloween in a COVID era. Just wanted to, got a few questions about it.
May I just say, that, if that protocol had been in existence 50 years ago, where they just put the candy out and leave it, we would have been smart enough to go out there at 4:30 and take it all.
Some people do that, and that's what happens.
We're asking everyone to be a little bit more honest, given COVID, and you can open your screen door and monitor it.
Well, if you're going to put it that way.
And last but not least, I'd like to know if the board would like staff to continue working on a project. We've put some time and energy into researching, and it relates to whether or not we could bring some outdoor skating to downtown, to Norwood Center this winter. We started looking at this a few months ago. There's sort of those larger versions of those backyard kits. That's certainly a possibility. It would only be able to be done probably in the theater lot. We thought about doing it on Central Street, but the chiller that's needed to make those work would be difficult to do on Central Street, and there's some concern about the utilities there. We've looked into the possibility of doing synthetic ice, which I didn't really know was a thing a few months ago, but I've now watched more YouTube videos than anyone would care to want to know on it. If we're able to pull it together, that would be either on Central Street or in the theater lot. It would be up for the duration of the winter and just give some outdoor activity for Norwood Center, given the, given the climate, given we know that folks are going to go inside, and it's, we've had so much activity over the summer and into the fall. We need to look at the funding sources and see if we can piece them together from a couple of different grants. I actually got some great grant suggestions earlier today that we're certainly going to look into, so we think that's a possibility, and there may be some donations there as well. But we just wanted to bring it to the board for any thoughts the board may have.
Well, my thought is it sounds nice to, and continue to add things to the town's activities and make available to the public. I am concerned about the expense. I think this could get up quite expensive, and I don't want unnecessarily using free cash and whatever. So you mentioned trying to get grants or donations or whatever. I think that would have to be, if not all, the lion's share of the costs personally. That's just my personal view, but the concept is great. I think the parking lot is a lot better idea than Central Street for technical reasons, and as well as you mentioned, trying to have that chiller set up properly and everything. I think the company that looked at the area has already said that's not the prime spot. I think we should get that open again. We talked about Columbus Day, then we talked maybe Halloween. You know, at some point, I think personally, it's, you know, right now, people are still using it, but I don't think it's going to happen much longer. We should plan on when that's going to reopen and get traffic flowing through there. Other comments? Mr. Haja?
Well, I support the pursuit of that. I believe you and I are the ones that originally talked about this. I, it's too bad it couldn't be on Central Street, only because the adjacency to that whole downtown corridor would make it probably more visible and continuous to other things that go on in the downtown area. But if it has to be the back lot, it has to be the back lot. I think it's a great idea to be able to have more activities, like the chairman said, downtown where families can bring down. I think it does bring in more eatery into the area as well, and who knows, that might lead to some other ideas and activities that someone may say could join in with the skating idea. So I think we absolutely should pursue it.
Mr. Maloney?
Just a question. We would, if we do it on the, in the parking lot, which is our brand-new parking lot, you're probably going to lose like 30 parking spaces, and I know a couple of businesses already have heard about this and are objecting to the idea. Is, I mean, is it, because there could be something gained too by the synergy of having people coming, maybe who wouldn't have otherwise, but is that a concern for us here if we put it there as opposed to Central?
I think it's always going to be a concern to how we're affecting the businesses. I can see the, I don't know under COVID how much their business is being affected or not. If it's a normal time, pre-COVID, I would see that we would be potentially harmful to the bowling alley and to the theater. I don't know who else might have contacted you, but I think 30 or so parking spaces would not be necessarily terribly detrimental to most of the other businesses that may have some people, customers using that parking lot or even their staff. But if we had the larger needs, like the, I said, the bowling alley and the theater, we definitely should be giving that consideration.
The other question I just had, we talked a little bit about cost on this one. The cost of doing synthetic ice as opposed to ice, real ice, would be about a third of the total?
That's what it's looking at. So just at the outset, for the cost perspective, the chiller ice or the real ice, I don't know whatever you call it, would be a lot of fun, but the synthetic cost is substantially cheaper, and it's easier operationally to make happen. We might be able to do the synthetic ice on...
Do you, do you do puck masters, David?
It's tough on the skates, though. I will say that people that have used it, my sons did. It was very tough on the skates themselves, the constant, or more sharpening. I say, okay, yeah, so it's another five or six bucks every time you do it, but if it's regular ice, you probably have to do it every, I don't know, fourth or fifth time that you skate in the game. It's synthetic, it's, at minimum, it's every other. Because it does do the job.
So you're putting together a bid spec?
We think we do, given the cost that likely has...
Would you first make a final decision on which way to go, or would you do it as an alternate, and then decide at the end when you see the price difference?
We'd have to see which company can do what. The decision point is, so between Central Street and the theater lot, we're 90% certain we can't do a chiller on Central Street for two reasons. One is connecting it to the level of power that it needs. It's just not on the street, so that, again, your cost starts to go through the roof. There's also access to a underground utility conduit that we need, that we think with the synthetic ice, we can easily be able to access that, whereas once you put the chiller in there, and the chilled ice, and we don't think we'd have access, so...
It's also very narrow, too narrow for decent skating. You're just, yeah, you're just going to have straight back up and down. That's not a real ice skating experience. Mrs. Donahue?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It's, it sounds like a wonderful idea, but I have to echo Mr. Plasko's sentiments. We have just spent a huge amount of money uptown, and we did a beautiful job with the picnic tables and the street and the painting on the barriers and all the flower pots, and we just had a huge, beautiful thing for the town. And this is, this is, if we can get the money from a grant, but I can't, I don't, I can't see spending any more of the town's money at this time, because what if we have to look forward to more of the same for next year, to just keep the quality of the uptown going in the warmer weather? And then we have froggies that the town takes care of, and now, I think, when we were at the skating club, didn't they say that they might have some free public skating time?
They do have skating, public skating time, but it's relatively limited. I think it's like on weekends, Saturdays or Sundays, or...
But this is when people would be skating around uptown, and we just spent how much money to fix the parking lot? And if we have to dig into the parking lot?
No.
With structures or anything?
No, 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 no. It sits right on top.
Okay. It sits on top, but then we bring in equipment to put it in place and stuff. But we have the skating club free time for, that we didn't have before, and just please be careful on the money.
So another question is whether this becomes free or there's a charge for its use. Of course, the skating club, there is a local resident discount, but it still is a charge over at the skating club, so...
Yeah, just to add quickly, Mr. Chairman, I like the idea. I think that the winter months are going to be hard for people, even just from sort of like staying inside and not seeing other people and families. And I think, you know, if we can do something to spark people to be outside and to be downtown and to use the restaurants and things like that, but I'm also, I understand Mrs. Donahue's point about the money and want to be cognizant of that. If there's a way to fund this where we're not putting too much of our own money into it, you know, I think that I would be for it, for sure.
So I think the sentiment is perceived with caution.
Sounds good. Well, again, we're still identifying the feasibility. The cost might ultimately come in. I mean, you get an early estimate, but you know, sometimes you get an early estimate, and it ends up being five times that. And then more and more places are doing this, so there might run into that supply chain issue. But, and then it may be something that if we try it and it's successful, we may look at, what you do is you rent the ice in a lot of cases from these companies, but maybe we look at buying it down the road, so we'll, we'll continue to work on it.
Mr. Maloney, back to the parking concern. Did you have feedback from other than the bowling alley and the theater?
No. I think the pizza, Broadway Pizza is another business that's adjacent, but they, they tend to do okay with sidewalk parking. And I think the bowling alley would be, would be affected.
And there'd still be half that parking, although maybe filled with skaters.
Yeah. I mean, I don't know if, you know, for example, Town Diner would be affected.
Well, during the day, they certainly do use some of those.
Yeah.
If we did go with the theater lot, remember that that would come with likely the opening of Central Street and removing barriers along the, yeah.
Pick up 20 spaces or so up there.
Moving the barriers along the street as well.
It won't help, help Broadway Pizza that much, but it could help the diner and other businesses in the area. Okay, is that enough of that? Anything further?
That's enough for me, Mr. Chairman.
That's enough for you. I'm going to second that motion. Anyone else have anything they'd like to bring up? Mrs. Donahue?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So we have town meeting coming up, November 12. Brian, which, which camera are we using for me? Okay. So we have town meeting coming up, November 12, and on the town meeting warrant, there are lots of articles about zoning. Lots of excellent work has gone into the preparation of these zoning articles, and they bring forth major changes in the town, especially... they bring forth major changes in the town, especially on Route One. And so in the local newspapers, there are ways that you can attend a hearing which will be held on October nineteenth about these zoning articles, some of them on October nineteenth. So when you go to the newspaper, even if you don't have a computer in your house, you can still use your telephone to access the public hearings, and at the public hearings, the proposed articles will be discussed and talked about and, and worked on. This is important for the people of the town who have their homes, which, about some of the proposed zoning changes on Route One. And where it's where you live in your home and it's your residence, you have to understand what, how these proposed zoning changes will affect your quality of life in your house. So we have a wonderful staff at the Selectment's Office, and if you need help on how to get to the public hearing by public media, please feel free to contact our staff, and some of you have seen on TV, like tonight, I can't hear this, I can't hear that, sometimes when we're operating on the computers, it's hard, and, and they've done a beautiful job with the work on the zoning, and it's just that even though it's a beautiful job, it's, a lot of the properties just about industrial properties, so it doesn't affect people's homes, but if it does affect your home, please, you know, seek it out and try and find out the way that you can get to these hearings and find out about what they're about.
I can. Anyone else?
Just very quickly, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Mizuko, any update on the flood grant program?
We've gone through the tier one and two applicants, and we are finalizing the tier three applicants. We've got to determine, based on the available grant funding left, what the percentage pay will be. Those applicants look like they'll be seventy to eighty percent. We were successful in making sure that the full amount of funds that we wanted to use, the state did authorize, however, there have been no additional dollars from the state.
Great, thank you, appreciate that.
All right. We've been trying to stick to every other week meetings, and I think they make, the meetings when we do meet more productive, and we don't have to meet with the COVID concerns, even though we want to meet personally, keeps us from meeting more often than we need to. That being said, there's a few things in the pipeline, particularly that we might want to have executive sessions for, the interviews we talked about tonight, so in between, I may take the liberty to call a meeting or two as we get those set up, and they might not even need to be, if the executive session is a couple items that we might, if it's convenient for everyone's schedule, it doesn't have to be at seven o'clock at night, it could be in the afternoon, it's gonna be as executive session closes to the public anyhow. So we'll work on those and see what schedules work best for everybody, but I just want to give you a heads up that we'll likely have a meeting or two additional coming up in the next week or so. All right, if there's nothing else, then I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. In favor? Mr. Ja.
Aye.
Mrs. Donahue, Mr. Lane.
Aye.
Mr. Maloney.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, we are adjourned, and thank you very much for your attention.